Wait a minute till 6:30.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Is everyone there?
Yeah, 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 we got them all.
All right, I have 6:30, we'll go ahead and probably need to order.
Okay. You have a call in, yeah, so.
Okay, I'll board members in person, so please stand and we'll do the.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, um, we'll just move to Oakland Farm, hold again, but is there anyone there for Oakland Farm?
Um, I, we got guests, but I don't know if they got anything to say. They're just here to.
Take notes for WA.
Perfect, so, nobody is on the agenda?
Sorry.
Okay.
So we should be good there, Jill.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, um, to approve agenda, changes to the agenda, there were no changes, um, or additions, so we just need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved by Sean Powell, signed by Paul, to approve the agenda as is any other discussion? Hearing none, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carried.
All right, under consent of interest, there are none listed and none new that I know of, so we'll move on. Um, for approved consent agenda, board will discuss an approved past month, board minutes, current claims, a contract for a Vera professional to be assigned to Old Elementary, um, Colony and, old, um, I'm sorry, Colony, and a donation of $2,500 from the Avera Foundation in support of the Hope Squad Chapter. A is to approve October minutes, B is approve claims, C is approve contracts, and D is approve donation. There aren't any questions, I just need a motion to approve.
Moved by Lashawn, signed by Turgier, to approve the consent agenda, any others discussion? Hearing none, on favor, say aye.
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 Post same sign, motion carried.
All right, we'll move to information at staff report. Um, and we'll start by High School Principal, which I know he sent that out, are you gonna read that, Dr. first?
Um, you know, I, I, I think he said that in everybody's email, I got a copy, I, I'll up to the, the members that are here, but, not really, I mean, if there's any questions on that, you know, just the highlights, uh, we tried to get those two days of skinnies in so we could get people, the teacher, the kids in front of the teachers in light of, or in preparation for, if we did get closed down, cause it's semester preparation this week, and we wanted most opportunity we can, so, that's why he created those, and was a little concerning at the end of last week when we kinda put all that stuff together, but he did, they did get that squared away, so, um, the e-learning, um, we're ready to do that, I think I included you guys all on the email about that, and made some clarifications to the staff about what we're gonna do in preparation, and clarified the difference between a snow day and, um, you know, an event such that we're going into here, potentially missing two to three days of school, so, um, I think everybody got that done today, um, on every grade, at every grade level, so, we should be ready, um, if it does happen, and then tutoring program, I, I've seen that in action a couple times down there, and I think everything is, been well received, and, and the kids are actually working well, with the kids who need some assistance there, from what I've seen. And there's the reinvent, or the intervention component back, um, they had not done that since the beginning of school, but, uh, I think some kids, a group of kids fell on some hard times there, so, uh, just trying to hold them accountable, and reinstated that program, so, like you said there, I think it's, uh, it's been helpful, and then, getting ready for your second semester, I'm not sure exactly what his, if he's coming in over the, um, holiday break, um, I suppose he may be here for a little bit, get everything in the computer, and get it ready to go for grades, and switching of classes, and things of that nature, so, that's Mr., any apologizes for not being here? He said he's on kid duty, well, I don't know, when they're your own kids, I'm not sure if that qualifies for me, that kid duty or not, but, uh, anyway, that's what he had to do, so, and I understood, but that's his report, Jill.
Okay, sounds good, anybody have questions? We'll move to Elementary Principal AV report, then.
Okay, I'll start out with, uh, Elementary report. Um, we have continued our mindset of the month, um, so we are into 100% accountable. Uh, that's been going pretty well, the teachers have been doing a nice job with that every week, kinda touching on a lesson that fits into our overall theme, um, so that's still continuing. Um, we had our winter concert earlier in December, uh, so I wanted to just recognize Mrs. Fink and all the teachers and kids for, uh, really great, uh, performance, uh, it was very well attended by the community, um, and it was a real true team effort in getting everything organized, and anytime you're working with beginning garden through second graders to try to get everybody moving in the same direction, and the teachers all did a great job, and Mrs. Fink did a wonderful job coordinating all of that, so I wanted to recognize them. Uh, last week, we had our wax museum, our fourth graders put on a wax museum event, again, something that was very well attended. Uh, the fourth graders each picked a person from history and put together a presentation, uh, working on their research skills, their public speaking skills, um, put together kind of a backdrop as well, and Mr. Kinnenberg helped record some of that as well. Um, so it was a really well-run event by our fourth grade teachers, and the kids did an excellent job on that. Um, semester's winding down, as Mr. M noted there, you know, end of next week, or middle of next week, I guess, when we're done with school, is the end of the semester, so it's crazy to think we're at that halfway point. Um, and I'm really happy just with the way things are going, um, you know, we've had a couple PD opportunities, talking about depths of knowledge, and the way that we wanna ask questions, and get our kids to think about things. Um, we've talked about culture, and, and different ways that that can be affected in your classroom, and I think the teachers are really buying in and doing an awesome job with the stuff that we've talked about throughout the year, and it's fun to be at that halfway point, to think back to where we started, and how much we've been able to accomplish throughout the year, so, that's the elementary report, um, any questions on any of, of that? Okay, um, activities wise, again, I wanted to start out with, we had our high school, middle school, um, winter concert with choir and band, and that was awesome to see, we had great numbers of kids that were participating, um, from our middle school and through the high school, and the, in the, just did an awesome job, it was, again, well-attended by the community, uh, the music was great, um, it was really fun to see the growth that has taken place over the course of a year, um, and the way that we're singing and performing, uh, but also in the numbers of kids that are participating, so, just wanted to recognize Mr. Larson and Ms. Anderson, uh, for great work that they've done there. Um, athletically, basketball, wrestling, gymnastics, they're all underway now, had our first basketball doubleheader last week, that went well, wrestling has had, uh, two tournaments now, and I'm really excited about the way, uh, they're starting off. Um, we've had some kinda growing pains through the early parts of wrestling, just as far as there's been some new stuff put in, is about the way that kids have to weigh in, and then a progression of how they can lose their weight, but I think our staff has done a really good job with that, the coaches have really been working hard to educate themselves on how, on that process, and they feel really good about where all of our kids are at with, um, where they're gonna be weighing in, as far as that goes, um, so that was good. Uh, all the coaches have been working really hard to get ready for the season, so it's fun to be able to see them now with their kids and watching them compete. Um, we're continuing with our partnership with Avera, um, he's coming down, James from Avera, from Mitchell, is coming down twice a week to lift with our girls' basketball program, and then the boys' basketball program with Coach Brunin, Coach Grave, they're lifting as well, so, it's good to see that strength training component continue. Um, I think that helps with our kids and, and the way that they're able to compete out there, so, just wanted to put a note out about that, otherwise, things are, are going smoothly, you know, we were fortunate to be able to reschedule our basketball doubleheader last week, uh, so we didn't have to miss anything, so hopefully, you know, we're able to get through another good week here, and, and we'll see what happens, so, um, but, yeah, everything's going pretty good. Questions on any of that? Oh, I also wanted to touch on, I talked with Scott earlier today, um, a couple of people have asked about the video board, uh, in the armory area, so I talked with Mr. Kinnenberg about that, um, and the reason we're not using that video board, couple, there are a couple reasons, and, you know, if you have questions, I'll do my best to answer, but Mr. Kinnenberg, Kinnenberg could probably speak a little more to it. The board itself is 20-ish years old, um, it's outdated as far as our software that we use to run it, and also some of the hardware that we need to run it as well, um, and so that's the reason why, so, in talking with Mr. Kinnenberg, we think that it would be around 5,000, 5,000-ish dollars to get everything up to date, to potentially use it, but then with the board being 20 years old, we're not sure as to what other, uh, things we would maybe run into if we were trying to use it at that point. Um, and so, in talking with him, and I, and I've talked with Mr. Brunin about this, we have priced out big video boards, I mean, those range from 75 to 100,000, which is out of our price range currently, um, we've looked at adding on the wings to the scoreboard, which, I think, Mr. Brunin, if I remember, it's like 16 to 20,000, or, or something like that, I think for both scoreboards, if we were gonna do something like that, somewhere in that range, I don't know, I met with Daktronics people last spring, and kinda went through all of that, um, and so, tho- those are kind of our options, and if we're looking at, you know, if, if you feel, if the board feels, or if you feel like there's a big push from the community, I guess in talking with Mr. Kinnenberg, we'd probably rather push towards doing something like adding on to our current scoreboard with those wings, rather than investing the 5,000 or more, maybe once we get into it, into that board that we currently have, just because the resolution isn't gonna be top-notch anymore anyways, with it being around, and, and with the things and the different programs we have to update with it, that's kinda where we're at with it, so, that's kinda the update, I don't know, Scott, does that help kinda answer some questions on that, and the people that you were talking to and stuff?
Yeah, we're just wondering basically why it wasn't, wasn't being utilized or whatever, so, creative and something like that, but, so, yeah, thank you.
Mm-hmm, okay. Any other questions, guys, on anything? Okay.
Mr. Fisher is done, Jill.
Okay, you wanna go ahead with your report?
Okay, so, um, the lighting project, Damon was here last week, um, and our construction median, and he is going to be the elector, the engineering firm that's going to be working on the new project, so, the mechanical and, um, electrical concept, but anyway, to finish up the lighting project, he did the walk-through, went through the whole footprint, so essentially, he's gotta sign a document, and then we can, uh, release the final payment on that, so, that, that should be put to bed here, so, um, just a reminder about a week from tonight, sorry, but school board development, again, hopefully the weather certainly cooperates with us, and Mr. Holbeck is coming down at 6:30 next week to engage, um, all of us in a, probably you five, myself, um, Mr. Brunin, I think, uh, is invited, but I don't remember if he had a, I don't think he had a game, did you? Oh, that's right, okay, yeah, so, um, Mr. Brunin too, to engage in a board, uh, retreat there, and some board professional development, so, last week, the governor's address, if you had an opportunity to read, or hear anything about that, or maybe even perhaps watched it on that particular day, but, um, 5% was recommended by, um, Governor Noem to education, uh, community service providers, state workers, um, and the like, uh, last year was recommended at 6%, this year's recommended to be 5. Um, there is money out there that would lead, not lead, but certainly, uh, educators and just about every other component, um, that's in that, uh, dependency on, on the state's budget, to go ask for more. She cited, I believe, a $325 million ongoing windfall of money due to, um, the, the economic status and, and where we're at, and the rate of CPI, and the growth that's going on in, in our state, so, I believe that it is, uh, superintendent, as we met last week as a group out in Chamberlain, to circle the wagon, so to speak, and talk to our state legislators about, um, if there is a, uh, belief or a feeling that they could support more. Uh, right now, inflation, um, last look was somewhere between, I don't know, right around 8%, 8.1, somewhere in there. Craig and I have talked, um, in the future here, we're gonna try to get you a little bit more realistic, um, picture, number-wise, as to what inflation has done to the Parkston School District, um, lights, heat, you know, fuel for vehicles, uh, supplies, um, all the other resources, so, but it's, it's, it's not an easy number to quantify, uh, just because there's a lot of different moving pieces there, but I think we can kinda give you an idea as to how inflation has added impact on our overall budget, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Craig, it's certainly, yeah, outside the human resource component of it, I think we certainly have seen increases in just about every other facet of the general fund, so, like I said, I don't know if we can actually put a number and quantify it for you, but we're gonna try to come up with some, give you an idea. So the notion of 5%, if we get 5%, and then, there was the comment made by the governor, made it very clear that, well, the legislature and her, it's her responsibility to recommend and pass the law to give you 5%, they have no control who gets the money. I mean, so, that statement was made very clear, um, I think it resonated, which, it's, I want everybody to understand that when it comes down, and money's coming down through the state legislature, and, um, the schools get whatever they get, it's not like, in my opinion, school districts are in the habit of pigeonhole the money, we're not pocketing it, we're not, not distributing it to the staff, um, you know, last year, out of the 6% increase, and we, we gave them 5.5%. And the half percent, you know, that we held on to was, again, to cover increased costs at that time, so, it's something to be aware of as we move forward, I guess, if there is conversation about, um, asking for more and lobbying with our, um, district, uh, um, 19 contingent, if they're willing to have that conversation about, you know, going more than the 5%, so, um, yeah, I mean, thank you, certainly, you know, gracious, and, and, you know, could've been worse, because the law says, uh, CPI or 3%, whichever's less, and I will say this, there is a faction in peer that would rather see us get 3. I mean, there's, there's a small group of people out there, they made it very clear that, uh, their mission is gonna be to follow the law, so, um, despite, you know, the increase in revenues at the state level, they don't wanna see education get more than what they're supposed to according to law, so, any questions on the governor's budget address, or comments, or concerns, or thoughts about where we're at? Okay. Um, ADM, just a quick update there, that we're holding even as of right now, I think we were down one student, so, um, which is, we can get through a semester, you can see there, we had some ebb and flow, um, we had some in, we had some out, so, but, the fact that we held relatively, um, steady is a good thing. And then the superintendent survey, um, I did put in your packet as well, uh, just information, something to look at, if you didn't really get a chance to browse through that, uh, it's good reading material, probably puts you to sleep in about three pages in, so, but it gives you a good insight as to the topics that we are asked as a superintendent's group before setting our legislative platform, so, we have talking points that we can talk to our legislative, um, representatives about, so, um, you know, you could take that for whatever it's worth, it just kinda gives you some insight, and, a lot of it is probably more professional, uh, on superintendent's part, some of their opinions, and then, but there are some questions there, you can see that they're probably speaking more for their school boards than they are on a personal, on a personal, professional level, so, if there's no questions, um, about that, the last thing that's not on here, but I'll just, because it's my report, um, if you did not get an email, okay, I've not checked your email, but, your, your state, uh, executive director of the Associate School Boards of South Dakota, Wade, Dr. Wade Pogany, um, has plans of retiring in 2023, so, um, they will have to go through an extensive search process to try to fill Dr. Pogany's role, Dr. Pogany came from the Department of Ed to fill that role, um, he's been in that role for 11 years, he's led the, um, school boards of the state of South Dakota, and, and he's done a, an incredible job, he's been a huge advocate and a great, uh, ambassador for public education, so, kinda sad to hear that and see him go, um, but, I suppose he's got other opportunities, and maybe tired of fighting the fight, so, don't blame him, I guess, so, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. That's all I have, Jill.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. All right, we'll move to discussion item, discussion item A is review policy manual, the following ASBSD policies are being presented for review, and a first reading, BA, BB, BBA, BBA, and BBB.
I put those policies in your manual, or, excuse me, in your packet, and I read through them, um, you know, essentially, uh, again, following the, your, your Associate School Boards manual, I don't see anything there that really needed to be tweaked, changed, but they are all, uh, policies that, uh, you know, govern as to what it is that, uh, you should be doing as a school board, so, um, this is first reading, as per saying again, we're not in the habit of sitting there reading those policies word for word, so if anybody ever wanted to read them, certainly come, let me know, we can get those, uh, to people, if anybody wanted to review what those policies actually say, so, um, that's the first reading in the section B component of that, so.
I have one question on those, and, not anything with the content, I guess, really, but there was a couple places where they had, like, special notes, I didn't know if, you know, if I, if I didn't read the other previous, um, ones, close enough, if there was notes like that in there, or is that metal stay in the actual policy?
Yeah, yeah, a good question, cause I think, I looked at that, and I read through those, um, I felt those are components that, uh, it brought some clarification as to what the policy was, yeah, but once in a while, you'll see that note component that's associated with that, and oftentimes, it may be citing specific codified law, um, in, in a different light as well, so, that's why that's in here, so.
It's a good question.
Okay, any other questions? All right, we'll move to B, review policy manual, the following ASBSD policies are being presented for review in a second reading, AD, AE, AEA, AGA, and AH.
So, in the process, like we described, it's a three-step process now, so that was introduced last month, so these five policies, essentially have their second reading, again, they're on the agenda, if somebody wanted to look at them, they certainly could, we talked about it last week, or, excuse me, last month, so, um, it's just a second reading, it's just a acknowledgement of that they're on this, the, um, agenda, and, you know, if somebody had some comments or questions, we could certainly, um, do that, so.
All right, any questions? Okay, we'll move to C, the following ASBSD policy manuals are being presented for review and adoption, AC, ACA, A, ACA, R1, ACAB, and ACB, so if everybody's okay with those, we would just need a motion to approve.
Yes, ma'am, yep.
So moved. I'll second.
Moved by Lashawn, and signed by Paul, to approve those, um, ASBSD policies, AC, ACA, ACA, R1, ACAB, and ACB. Any other discussion? Hearing none, on favor, say aye.
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 Post same sign? Motion carried.
All right, D is the building committee update, school board will be presented with an update by the committee on the proposed multi-use facility addition design process adjustment.
Oh, so we met last Wednesday, um, Scott, and Matt, myself, Adam, um, I think Mr. Brunin, yeah, he had basketball practice, so Mr. McNipley had another commitment as well, but, um, we had Steve Jastrum, uh, Cody, Kobe McGinley, and then we had Pitts Construction here as well, um, a, a greater portion of the conversation was on mechanical. Um, so if you're wondering how that's going to be done, um, they gave us two options, I believe, one was the all rooftop units, and four rooftop units in total, so, one on the center, one on the multi-use center, one on the, um, wrestling room, and then one that sits adjacent to that, would, would supply some office space, so, um, but all rooftop units, and the option was, is to do, um, heat, uh, exchange, uh, on top, um, using electric, using electrical, um, and the other option was to, uh, hook into our boiler system in the high school end, and use, um, boiler system. That would entail, uh, putting another boiler, do we put brand-new boilers in the high school end? So this would include a third boiler in that component, and then that would supply, um, help supply, uh, the new footprint, so, and it would all be above, going rooftop units, it would be inside, obviously, but it's gonna be in, I don't know if you wanna call them rafters, roof drays, things like that, so, and it would be a continuous loop. Didn't see that it would be a whole lot of, uh, challenges with that, it didn't sound like it anyway, unless you guys heard different, I guess, so.
The only thing was, the other option was, was gas, wasn't it?
Was there gas, natural gas into it, instead of electrical, the heat exchangers up top, yeah.
But he says, uh, the air, the air was, the steam was the.
More efficient.
Yeah, more efficient.
Way more efficient.
More efficiency, if one goes out, yeah. There's no.
The two that are down there are brand-new, so add the third to it, and always to make sure that you have to fall back on, if one goes down, you got the other ones to, um, step up to the plate.
So one, one's enough?
Um.
One additional, so there you go.
Yeah, yeah, the fact that there is two there, that that whole system would be, uh, they'd have to put a couple more pumps in there to get it to, to do what it needs to do, but, felt very confident, I felt that three could do that whole footprint down there with the addition, to do it all would be, would suffice, I mean, it would do well.
Didn't, maybe I'm not remembering correctly, but didn't he say that the third one would only run on very coldest, most colder days, I mean, it would run most of the time, yeah.
Now, you get into those blow, blow temperatures, and that's even the two that are in there right now, the two that are in over here in the armory, and the two that are over here in the elementary, they all work on the same capacity, that, um, very rarely does it get cold enough for both of those two have to work at the same time. It has happened, and it happened, I remember it happened in last year, um, but usually, one, um, is running the whole system in any one part of the wing, and then the other one is more of a support mechanism, when it calls for more heat, or when one goes down, so, that's the, the notion behind that. Um, the other, uh, thing that brought in some head scratching, I think from Architect and Pitts Construction's component, was, uh, um, on the footprint, there is, by the fitness center, um, a changing room there that had some restroom facilities in it, before you walked into the, um, fitness area. These here. Those, those, we, we did that, put a shower and a toilet in those two areas, the nearest sewer is gonna be down here, it's not on the plan, to get into our current girls', uh, locker room, that's the, the closest cleanout, and all the sewer in this existing footprint runs east out of the building, and then heads that way to your lagoons, and to hook into the city sewer system to take it out there. Um, Ryan Murtha, who communicated with Arc Inc., said that the, here, he said, that's a long ways away to get to, to the city sewer, so, suggestion was, is to try to get down over here. So suggestion was is to try to get down over here. How that will be done is all overhead, overhead. So it's going to need a.
Lift station.
A lift, not a lift station, and what did he call it?
Called it an injector.
An injector. Very common, said it's not uncommon. He said it just, and I said, well, and it running in this hallway? So you you wouldn't see this, but there's going to be a pipe, four-inch. That's probably going to carry the the waste. And then try to hook down in here to the cleanout in the girls' locker room. So and one of the complications there was is to make sure that we get this ready in the new footprint while, you know, this is kind of phase, part of phase one, is to get this squared away. And then get this all done and over with and get this stub in out here where it needs to be. So when they start digging and tearing in, that this this is here. And when it gets to that point, then they can just hook into it. Because they'll have to go through some concrete, they'll have to go through some walls to do that. So but it, Mr. DeWitt didn't believe that would be a very large obstacle to overcome. And I think he even said, or Steve said that the cost factor is not, you know, yeah, something to be. The fact that it's even all overhead, because it probably even helps, quite honestly. Then you're not digging trenches and you're not busting up concrete. Even though you have to do a little bit, it would cost, it would save that component, so. Yeah, I mean, I think we answered all their questions that they needed to continue finalizing the drawings. I think Matt, you asked if it was on pace. I think Steve said it's, yep, they're they're pretty confident that come January, that we'll have one more meeting. They'll be, the drawings will be done, the specs will be done in their entirety. And then kind of one last walkthrough, and then I think they're ready to put the spec book together and get it ready to go out for bids. So he didn't see anything at this time that would prohibit the timeline that he gave us from, you know, not happening.
They talk anything about costs? I mean, I'm sure they're putting out other projects as we speak. Did they talk about any type, any type of shortages or any type of comments about that?
No, I, you know, it's kind of be, that's going to fall on Pitts's plate, you know, as far as doing some solicitation is to get people to submit bids, you know, for the project. That's kind of your construction manager component. They didn't really cite, you know, any any grand shortages right now. It sounds like some things even in the mechanical and electrical world maybe caught up a little bit as things have slowed down. And it didn't sound like, you know, the majority of the footprint is a precast concept, which we're using a company that's pretty close, pretty local. So, yeah, I mean, I didn't hear anything negative as far as shortages or. And they never gave us specific numbers either. I think there's a lot there that has to be done before they can really hone in on that.
We talked about some changes. Did they talk about those costs, what that would do to lower the project? Any type of indications there with the windows?
We don't have an initial cost, so it's hard to get the correct cost, I guess. I don't know.
The one positive thing they did talk about was with the gym and that the fire.
Oh, yeah.
The code, that it wouldn't be a gym, we've never referred to it as a gym. And so therefore, it'd be more of a training, multi-use facility. And so with that being said, you don't need to plan it to code so that it could hold. Because they said that could hold up to 700 people, right? And so it would be down to 160 people. So then you don't have to put the fire extinguisher stuff in there.
So it'd have to be, the code would be a wet suppression system. It also would have to hook into sprinklers and things overhead. If you were going to use it as a true gym and you were going to populate that with anywhere from three to 700 people, based on the square footage. The grand, the grand number we said is about 700, based on what the square footage of that is. But we're not even putting bleachers in it. You know, so that's, it truly is a multi-use facility for everything under the sun. And then the fact that you're not going to have competition-level stuff. Now, if you have a third grade game or a fourth grade game or something like that, or fifth grade, I mean, the sign will be posted, it says 160 for occupancy. And that's something that we would probably have to make sure that we abide by and do what we can to enforce that. Because of that, there's cost savings, again, no reference to numbers, but you would not have to put a wet suppression system in the overhead there from a sprinkler's perspective, so. So that was good. And we got to eliminate four doors?
Yeah.
I think four more doors because of that as well. So, yeah, I mean, they didn't give any exact numbers, John. Like Matt said, you know, you got a cost estimate, you know, back in October, 6.32 million and construction of another million and.
I was just trying to get a feel if it's higher or lower than that, just.
And they, I mean, they, they can give us a guess when they're sitting here, but to get anything accurate, you know.
No, I get that, but they bid out stuff all the time. So I, they would know if it's higher or lower than what they showed us a couple months ago, is all I have.
And I'm not, you know, I don't know what other projects they have in the hopper. You know, if they've, if they've had any bid led, you know, bid openings within the last couple of months. You know, either, either one, Pitts and/or Arc Inc., I'm not sure what, like I said, what other irons in the fire that they have to answer that potential question. So hey, we just had a bid opening, and you know what? It came in spot on, or we missed it by 2 million. So they never referenced any of that. But, yeah. The other component that I just received, the day they were here, he asked about the engineering survey from GeoTech and doing the core samples. You guys know better, I'm not from here, but those of you that are born and raised here, the place is a swamp, right?
We've had issues with soil here.
So that became very evident. I read the report, and I'm like, ew. So it's not a huge liability, but in order to get a surface, a subsoil surface, you're going to obviously have to do some excavation and you're going to have to backfill. I mean, he made that very clear in the report. And you've got a lot of sand, even to the point, I've never seen it before. I've seen, I've seen reports by GeoTech before, but even outlined the size of the excavator. It's a track hole versus wheel hole, what size of the bucket in order to remove the material from, and how to go about doing that and being very careful not to disturb components of what you have existing out there. Certainly the stuff that you have to do, but like up against a continuous building or an existing building, make sure you're being careful there because of the sandy subsoil and how that could potentially cave away real quick. So excavate, and he puts levels in there that we're going to, they're going to have to backfill. And obviously, I suspect that's what was done on every component of your buildings that are sitting here. So nothing new, I don't think. I asked Steve to give me a call just for some clarification. I haven't heard back from him as to anticipated. If not, do you see any huge concerns with, you know, the footprint? So I don't know why it would, because you got pretty good-sized facility sitting here already. You can't tell me that that dirt's any different than the dirt we're sitting on this way over there, so. But anticipated increased costs? Because maybe he didn't plan on excavating to that degree, maybe? Could be, we'll see, so. But, yeah, that's, oh, and the last one, we talked about flooring in the multi-use area. This is an example, he had this with him, he had a block two that we looked at. This is actually a subfloor. This can come in different mills, different thicknesses. And even the top portion of this can come into a different mill levy as well, or mill, a different thickness as well. And they were going to look at this and I think the product that was in Dakota Wesleyan's facility, if I remember, and get some numbers, and Pitts obviously did that. So they were going to help with the process and give us some opportunities to, okay, what exactly do we want on this? And this will help with, so you're not just on cement. I mean, this will help with some flexibility, you know, within the surface. But they do make this to a thickness where he said they, you can inline roller skate on this stuff. And you would never know that you're, you know, cutting a rug on it. It's how durable it is, so. I believe Scotland, maybe.
Scotland and Platte, I think.
Put this in there, their, what was that, Craig, is it?
Their second, no, their second gym.
Okay, in Scotland, and I think Platte has.
Platte's the second gym as well.
We don't have to do, yeah, we don't have to do the wood green if we don't want to. I mean, that's just the sample that he had in his, you know, if you want to feel it, I mean, it's. And we asked about performance on it, didn't seem to be an issue. You know, if there's going to be like a dead spot, I think Scott, you asked that, you know, how's the wall going to react to that, you know, if you're doing some stuff? Apparently, didn't seem to be an issue with the backing on it.
Eight-foot wide rolls, I think?
Six-foot, I thought. Yeah, it just rolls out. And if you needed to cut it, you could cut a piece out and splice it back in there.
Weld it together somehow.
Yeah, so you wouldn't see that. But, yeah, that's, that's where we're at on the building, so.
Okay, any further questions? So we'll just, here again, in January after that meeting, about where we're at, and we'll mostly just be waiting for the bid to go out, right?
Yeah, essentially. I, everybody kind of took off, but I did ask Steve and Kobe when they planned. He said they would get in touch. We didn't walk away from that meeting with a next date specifically planned. But I suspect, you know, after the first of the year, in that first or second week of January, that they're going to, excuse me, reach out to try to set up another building committee, you know, date, meeting. And that would be to the simple, to the purpose of kind of wrapping it up, the design process, so.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. All right, we'll move to E, elementary drop-off and pickup concerns. School Board will revisit concerns about drop-off and pickup points based on any further community feedback.
I think that was a directive you guys gave last week, or excuse me, last month. That's why we put it back on that agenda. I don't know, Mr. Fisher, if anybody, nobody had reached out to me, you know, if people watched it, you know, the broadcast live, or if they went back and circle back and watched that. Nobody has reached out to me, nobody's communicated to me. But I don't know, Adam, if anybody's done that on your behalf or.
Nope, haven't heard anything.
Yeah, so I went out and hung around a little bit, and my personal opinion, I drove bus Friday, and it seems less congested. I mean, I don't know, I think maybe keeping those kids indoors, the city kids, has helped alleviate some of that.
And just with the cold, I mean, I think parents are naturally staying in their cars. And so we get that natural lane like we'd like to have. So that's happening for a majority. Basically, it's our preschoolers or beginning gardeners that the parents come grab them so that they're not walking. But, yeah, so it's, I think it's worked better. We tightened some things up, and it's working better.
I mean, if they still have concerns, it has not been communicated to us, so.
Okay, so thank you for the update. All right, we'll move to F, five-year capital outlay plan. School Board will discuss prioritizing projects that are in need of being aired for agenda.
So Craig and I sat down with this, and I know we had this on here a couple of months ago, when we were talking about the money component of things. But it's this time of the year that typically, December, January, try to bring it back to the school board about prioritizing. And the reason why we prioritize is then we can actually go out to start soliciting to vendors and say, hey, can you give us some ideas as to what these potential projects would would cost? So we can give you some ideas as to, you know, the money that's going to be involved in some of the projects that are on here. The reason why I bring it to you guys is, is there something there, you know, from a prioritization perspective, you know, that you want to prioritize? That you would say this is our, got to be our number-one look-in, or that we need to change, or we need to address, or we need to take care of? And there's obviously more than one. I think I probably put eight different, or we, Craig and I highlighted about.
In no specific order, really.
Nah, no, no specific.
They're just the highlighted ones that we felt were top priorities for this upcoming year.
Yeah, and again, we're going to back our way into a number on that, above and, or not above and beyond, that's not the right term. There's a dollar amount, I know I put in my notes that we would have a dollar amount for you. But on average, I think, Craig, help me out here, in your capital outlay and projects like this, that's, I forget, is that like a 150, 200,000-dollar?
Around there, I was going to say, I was thinking around the 150.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Different, it all depends on the, than the textbooks for the year, on what, what is up for renewal of textbooks. It's one of the main components that drives how much we have left to do projects for. Because some textbooks aren't, you know, some years aren't. Math and science are two of the highest ones. When you get the years where there's business and those other classes, the textbooks just aren't as expensive, because there's not as many. So, but I don't remember what, next year is a pretty high one, though, so.
We're math.
Our number, yeah, our number is not as high as it could be in other years. But that's what we'll back our way into, is that that amount.
And what is the status on the the Armory floor there?
There's a new hole.
Yeah.
Well, that's part of the conversation, what would you like to see?
You'd like what was done.
What's going on?
So our comments here, you know, where we had the holes, you know, and the terrazas busting up. There's two more beggar holes.
I thought you talked about wood floors.
Yeah, no, no. There's one hole and a bump.
Is the entry?
It's only a matter of time.
Yeah, and that bump is like very cracked.
Is the entry, what, I see that was tore up too, or is that?
No, we just took the blue mats out of there. That's carpet, that's one of these things on here, where was that at?
It's on the second page.
Second page, we had.
You see the carpet.
Carpeting and the vestibule entries. They had a rubber or a plastic blue mat that you didn't take your shoes and rub, you know, but.
It didn't fit.
Didn't get cleaned.
Didn't get cleaned. It was all busted up, half of it. But there's a new product out there that I'm familiar with, that I'm telling you, we can do all of our vestibules in. And it's, it's, again, it's a product, it's got backing on it. You, this will outlive any of us. And the easeability and how to clean it, it's simple. And it's nothing more than a shampoo and a vacuumer, and you go over it as many times as you can in order until you start cleaning up. Every time you put water down, it comes back clean. And it's, it does not get below the backing on it, it cannot penetrate that. So it's not like it's going to seep through and get to your cement that's down there. So you can put it on tile, you can put it on cement, you can overlay it on just about anything you want to overlay. You could overlay it on terrazzo, it doesn't matter, so. Now, it's got an expense component to it, but it's the last time.
And those areas are very big.
You'll ever need to do anything to it, so. I shouldn't say last time, the next generation would have to worry about it, because I think we'd all be in the ground, don't you?
I, the part that got replaced already, I think it, I think it looks fine. I think I had said earlier, it seemed like the west portion of it seemed like it had some fractures, some like some spider webbing type fractures. So I don't know if that's a longevity issue, but other than that, I mean, if it, ask me in 20 years if I like it, I don't know.
I asked Brink about that, I saw him, I mean, he said it's not uncommon. I asked him about the viability, I mean, is that going to start flaking and peeling away? And, I mean, he didn't have 100%, absolutely not. But some of the projects that they've done with that, it's not something that, you know, at this stage of the game, that they've seen a lot of it going the wrong way, you know, as far as falling apart, I guess, so. I don't know, there's a, there's a notion, I was down there today. There's, I want to say, it comes in partitions, it comes in sections, because there is another line.
There's another seam, yeah.
That runs through there, and maybe if you just took that up and went to that seam, the difference, I mean, now you're looking half and half, right? That runs through there, and maybe if you just took that up and went to that seam, the difference, I mean, now you're looking half and half, right? You're looking at still half of it terrazzo, and then if you fix that one portion that's got the two holes in it right now, with what you did in, you know, coming this way from the east entrance, then you got half of it looking like that, you got half of it that looks like terrazzo. But if you wanted to not piecemeal it in there, but do portions of it getting towards the boys' bathroom, or excuse me, the bathroom, not boys', but the bathrooms, then you could do it in a, in a couple pores. What is beyond that, you could see some of the, the surface irregularities that are in there. There's bubbling there. It's not like what is currently exists. Is it common? I suspect it probably is at some point in time, but how long can you get away before those two sections that would be left did what, you know, by the door and what the current section has done, so I don't know. Um, we would, I, I can't give you, I don't think Craig can give you what the first.
Cost.
Cost is.
No, I haven't yet, do you have?
No. So I don't have any idea. But the terrazzo, Craig, Colby, doing that whole footprint, if you did it from one door to the, the east entrance, all the way back to the boys', or excuse me, boys', what was I saying, boys? The bathrooms was all of sixty?
I think it was sixty-six thousand. That did not include the bathrooms.
Right. And I think the greater problem with that is labor. I don't know, is as much as the product is as much as it is the labor that's involved with it. So it's not an easy process, even what Widenbach Construction did, very kind consuming.
Well, whatever we choose on that, I think it needs to be done this summer, I mean, it's.
You want the whole thing, or you just wanna do up the next?
So that big bubble is in, in the next section?
It is in the next section, both bubbles are.
Yeah.
They're both really close to each other.
Right.
The width of this table may be away.
And somebody did catch their foot on it during the basketball game, they witnessed it. The one that, the one that isn't broke yet, because we had a cone over the broken spot.
Yeah, sure.
Then I watched somebody catch their foot and I'm like.
Is there any way Widenbach can come in and sand that down?
No, it'll just crumble.
Yeah, it'll just crumble, good.
That's what we have in the first time, Scott, I mean, I didn't expect to happen what happened.
Sure.
I mean.
Cause I seen that.
We were in the building, next thing I know, somebody said, you may wanna go down there and take a look, and next thing I know, there's like.
Every little pieces just continues to get bigger.
It just deteriorate, it just disintegrated. Once they got into it, it was like, it just kept on falling apart.
So can we get a, oh, quote from them for how much it would cost, or we just assume it's sixty thousand minus so much because we've already missed part of it, or what?
I'll talk to Brad.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be the plan, I mean, I, you know, in fact, it'd be nice to have a.
Idea.
A bill, an idea, but a bill for what?
Absolutely, yeah.
The first, the first stage of that and how that went, so. Then, I mean, you'd have a pretty good idea then, so.
Can we get that and then maybe we can look at it again?
Yeah, there's any of these that are on the list, um, guys, is that it's, you know, just trying to put some prioritization on it, like, okay, we need, we know we wanna look at this, we know we wanna fix that. Um, those are the things that Craig and I came with, like I said, we have to put new, um, uh, sink and cabinets in both the high school.
Counter tops.
Countertops, uh, sinks, and maybe that's, you know, uh, slant in front, hide the plumbing, maybe it's ca, I don't know. We gotta look into a couple of that, but that needs to be done, that's.
Yep.
That's bad.
That's number six, is what you're talking about?
It is, yep. Um, playground improvements, you know, we had those, I had done a lot of work with that, um, last year, before we decided to really move forward with a project, um, that's at hand. Um, I still have numbers for that, so it probably wouldn't take a whole lot to get updated on that from, uh, the company, the American Playground that I was working with, so, um, we could certainly take a, a look at that. Some of the other components there, um, the student desks, teacher desks, the window blinds, Craig said, you know, um, things are pretty close to being done with the student and teacher desk, not so sure that we would even have the necessity to do that. You know, so that'd be something that could be down the prioritization list, uh, you know, where we're at money-wise. You know, if we had a few dollars remaining, we could certainly take a look at that. Um, I think another priority, like Matt said, is probably your lunchroom comments floor. If we could truly get some numbers in, maybe we could get Omaha or Terrazzo back up here, if you know what that company was. Craig, is it Terrazzo, or is it?
It's, um, DeMarco Brothers.
Oh, yes, DeMarco. And maybe they could swing back up here sometime when they're coming through to give us, uh, an idea of where things are at in their product line right now, so. Door magnets, I could tell you, uh, we did seven last year, gonna continue that process, that's more of a fire and martial code issue. Um, last year, I think we got seven doors for about five thousand dollars, so, um, I suspect that number would be relatively close to that. Ventilation system in the shop area, um, I know it's been talked about, it's something that I never got, uh, last year. I looked into that, uh, reached out to a vendor and never got any response, and then a lot of things just started happening, I didn't get back, a chance to circle back to it. But now that we have, um, I think we've ever really. Paulson's here, sheet metal here, you know, it'd be a little bit easier maybe to, you know, get those guys in here and pin them down and say, what can you help us with here, um, from the welding, uh, program? It'd be a great addition, cause right now, as you have, is there two, those two charcoal filter things that are in there, so, um, hanging from the ceiling, so. If that's something you wanted us to take a hard look at and get some quotes, I could bring them, um, down here, because they're gonna be here throughout the greater portion of the summer, changing the current unit layers in and out, so. And then the carpet and the vestibules, like we said, I could do work with that company, um, and try to get some ideas as to what that may cost. And last one you see there is, Craig, you speak louder than I am on this deal, but I don't know that. You tell me it's all of ten and eleven years old, I think, there's a model date on that.
I don't know, I'm sure.
Pretty sure.
I haven't purchased it, but I remember.
You didn't?
I've been doing it since oh eight, so.
I think I was in the hallway one time with Brian and Robert, and we looked at the date on it, and I'm pretty sure it was all of eleven years old. And we've piecemealed it together in just my short time here, I don't know, many different, two different things on it for sure, I think busted in, we.
What, what are you talking about, I'm sorry?
Floor scrubber.
Oh, okay.
That takes care of our lunchroom every day and all of our hallways with the Terrazzo tile in it and, um, even in our two current, uh, facilities are, that have wood floors in it, which, that's still up for debate as to whether we should be doing that or not, so.
Maybe this is not a, I don't know, maybe, I probably won't ask this question right, but I'm just wondering, like, you know, when I look at this list here, and I'm thinking in my mind, well, all these things are important, but how do we label them and what do you guys think and all that? But what is the amount of money that we have that's available for a project in a year? Like what, you know what I mean, like it'd be nice to know, like, oh, we have a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
This is how much these projects cost, this is what we wanna do first, when we start and just go down the list. Um, what, what is that number amount?
Hundred, about a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, that helps. So then if we, um, if we had numbers on some of these things, I think, obviously, number two would be outside of that, cause we're using different funds for that. But, um, you know, I don't know, that helps me kinda know better where we're at. Maybe you said that, I'm sorry if you did, I missed it.
No, it's okay. I can get quotes on everything that you see on there and then bring it back to you, and then again, if we wanna talk about backing our way into a number, I mean, that's certainly.
I had construction improvements in the capital outlay deal was a hundred and twenty-five thousand a year, but some of these things get taken out of other areas. Like the, um, for instance, when you're talking about the student desk, teacher's desk, that does not come out of, um, construction and improvements. That comes out of the twenty thousand per twenty-five thousand each, what it looks, that I budget.
In your mind.
Line item for the elementary and for the high school. And each of them have that, and you have, that's to replace all of anything that the teachers ask for that would come out of capital outlay, along with those types of things. So it all depends on what's the teachers request, when they request, um, new bookshelves or new things like that, that's coming out of that twenty to thirty thousand as well on each end, and then whatever's, you know, we back our way into that while we can and don't do and don't purchase for them as well. Um, depending on how many student desks you're gonna do, so. But those are all, you know, there's different line items. On a construction and improvements deal, like a, for instance, ventilation system would be under that. Door magnets would be under that.
Parking lot repair.
The parking lot, no, the parking lot repairs is a separate line item.
Jen, you got that already planned for?
Yeah, that's a separate line item. Um, and then, uh. The bathroom remodel would be like that. Playground improvement, improvements, those types of things.
So maybe it would be better to have this kinda broke out by where the funds come from, how much we can use from each fund and then how much they would cost. So it would help us maybe identify, you know, what we can do, um.
Playground improvements may be more than the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, depending on what you wanted.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand, is that like if something gets broken and we have to fix it, does that count for that? Or is that above and beyond any, like incidental that you already have set aside?
That, well, that's in the construction and improvements twenty-five, thirty-five line item. So there is some of that is considered repairs, yes. Under that function code. But you also have vehicle, and do you need to do the vehicle, there's another thirty thousand that you could do.
That's what I was wondering, is, is that?
That's a separate line item. And that's why we gotta get prices on these things first before, and then we gotta come up with, what are we gonna take and not budget? You know, we just wouldn't budget the thirty thousand for the vehicle, because we're not necessarily maybe gonna get a vehicle. Although there's two or three of them that are probably at a, over a hundred thousand miles right now already, so.
We have to keep revolving those over as we.
I mean, we could probably get by another one more year before we replace one of those black ones, but only one. The one only has eighty-six, I think, and the other one has about a hundred and twenty. The one that goes every day. To Mitchell twice.
So what I hear you saying is all these projects might come out of different funds in different places, right?
Yep.
So is there a way to, I mean, maybe I'm the only one, I mean, I just need to see like what that breakdown would be and where, where we can spend and what we have the money to spend. I don't know, maybe no one else needs that, but I'm, I'm, it's a lot of stuff and knowing where it all comes from.
We can do that. It's easy enough.
Okay. Anybody else have questions or comments?
Is there anything on that list you say no?
Do you guys have, like, your own one? Like, I know these are things that, you know, need to be done, but your own idea of what is first, second, third?
Do I?
Yes.
We gotta remodel the bathrooms for sure.
I think we need to take.
I guess.
Parking lot repairs need to be done, cause we haven't done it for a few years, something, otherwise it's gonna be too much at one time again.
And then your lunchroom comments floor. Kinda add on the list, but I think, I believe the playground.
Playground is pretty big.
The playground needs to be addressed in some way, shape, or form, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So for me, like, I don't work there every day, I just, I mean, you guys are there all the time and you guys are using it and the staff that you work with, and you know what needs to be replaced. So for me, I would love to see what yours, you know, what you think is top priority, and then where that falls for budget, and how much money we have to spend so we can approve some of these things so we can get them done.
Okay, we can do that. I'm not sure I'd have them all by January, just because of the holiday.
Well, we could approve them till the next budget, it'd be in the next budget.
This is five to ten years, so I'm not like expecting it next week or anything, I'm just saying, to break it down, it might be a little easier to approve things if we kinda knew what our amount was and what things you guys find is priority first.
Yeah. Everything that we will get, that I plan on getting quotes on based on what's on the list.
To do this.
Would be for this summer.
Yeah.
To address this summer, so.
Which are.
Backing our way into that number, so. But we could certainly, um, make sure that, um, to identify, you know, what line item that comes from, certainly a greater portion of it's in capital outlay, but is it a capital outlay line item that currently exists, or is it above and beyond? So we can, we can clarify that, so.
Does anybody else have any comments or thoughts?
And I don't know if the money's gonna be there when you start adding different things that we might need, but we've always looked at that storage facility where we can put stuff.
The outdoor?
Yeah. For the vehicles, vehicles, you know.
Cause they just, we had a lot of damage out here, and then it takes.
Best number five, yeah.
Maybe number four?
Five.
Oh.
Or, excuse me.
No, that wasn't it.
No, uh.
Number four, outdoor storage facility.
Vehicle more.
Yeah, number four, yeah.
Sorry, sorry.
So that would be like where you would park the vehicles and things like that?
Yep.
Just a lot of stuff around here.
I spent my first half hour after the snow outside cleaning up vehicles. There's a lot of snow on them.
Okay, well, this is a good start of a list anyway, I think, the snow and the, and then that bottom stuff that you have listed there, it looks like some of those things just kind of happen, right? Like if we need them, we replace them.
Exactly.
You're always budget, budgeting for them, right?
Yeah. Craig?
Yep. Okay.
Okay, sounds good. Anybody have anything else? All right, we'll move to E. Christmas gift for staff, the school board will discuss the contents of the craft Christmas gift. They show support and appreciation for their hard work and commitment to the students and family with support from the school district.
Throwing it out there.
Hey.
I think it's a concept that maybe Craig has been done the past year and there a little bit, uh, I don't know.
Well, there's been, there's been gifts for summer, most of the time it's at in-service time at the beginning of the year.
Have you ever done a Christmas gift?
No.
You've never done a Christmas gift?
I think it's great.
Not my time.
I do think most organizations do, though, even if we have that. Or lots do.
Uh, yeah, there's obviously a cost component to that. Again, it's not much, it, it's more of the sentiment, in my opinion. I mean, I've had the experience of doing that, made a point of it, and helping our, our board understand that and getting them to, and nobody ever balked at it, to be honest with you, but, you know, I get there's a school district this size, comes with a little more of a cost component to it, and one has to be cognizant of that, so, but.
So your budget, you're, you're saying about twenty-five hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's about twenty, twenty-five bucks a person.
Yeah. Does anybody have any feedback or thoughts? Dad or John or Scott?
Good.
I think it sounds like something we should do.
I agree. I agree. We got a great staff, and I think we should show our appreciation.
Yep.
Okay.
We can do that.
I hear agreement, is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's a good idea.
Good. We'll get some Christmas cards, and, um, is there something there specifically? Does anybody help me out here, is there such things as Chamber bucks or Parkston bucks?
Parkston bucks.
Can you use in a variety of different establishments in the community?
Anywhere.
Anywhere. I mean, is that like even like a, like a corporate, like a runnings? I mean, is that their?
Yeah. Say it's taken from the bank, you can deposit them.
All right. Yeah, I think that'd be a great, a great gesture. Thank you.
Thanks for thinking of it, I just, that was really good, I appreciate that, bringing that up. All right, um, we need a motion to approve?
No, there's a line item, there's a budget line item under the board for that.
Okay.
I mean, then we can take it out of, it'll be adjusted if we have to adjust, um, at the time with, um, supplemental budgets.
We'll move on to action item. Action item A is to approve financial report. The school board will review the September financial report for inspection and approval. That's supposed to say November or October? Is it actually September? It says September in the midst of saying there, but I think you meant December.
What does it say September? I don't know why it does that. I know I changed it, I change it every month, apparently.
Is it September?
Apparently it doesn't say. This would be the November financial report, yes, ma'am.
Okay, the November, sorry about that.
No, it's my fault, it's, you're right, it says September, but.
Don't worry, okay.
Craig, it's, um, your deal.
Yeah, the. Yeah, the, when you look at the general fund balances in the yellow sheet, it's down a little bit, but that could be some, uh, I have not, I've requested money from, uh, for Esser for the project, but I really haven't requested any of the money yet for like the teachers and the staff and the learning loss side of it. So that could be one of the reasons why it's down a little bit compared to, when you look at the ending balance from November twenty-one was one million four, now it's one million three, or four, five, so a hundred and fifty thousand out of it. I mean, that's one of the reasons why. Oh, the other one is the title, I mean, I haven't collected title, because, you know, you try to do that game of cash balances, when your cash balance is low as possible for the, for the state, so. I don't request it until after this, we got our main deal of taxes this year, or this month, I mean, um, the first one, first half. Um, you kinda wait till October's done, because that way your cash balance is low. There's two different months throughout the year that they're low, and that's those months right before the two, uh, big tax request, or deposits from the county, so. And when you look at your cash balance report that I gotta do for the state at the end of the year, it's based on your percentages, so.
Craig, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
In the bottom prior years data.
Yep.
The number there is reflective and it's comparable to, it's an ending balance, yes? So the one three oh three in November of twenty twenty-one, it was one four five six, right?
Yep.
Okay.
That is correct. I have a question on the tax receipts.
Yep.
When they come in, you said twice a year?
Big chunks twice a year, yep. It used to be more frequently, but now it's the last, I don't know when that changed, but it's two big ones. And it's November and April, I think, or May.
So whenever they do come in, are they always in the same proportion in the general fund, Capella, special education?
Percentage wise, you mean? Um, it all depends on who pays them, or how, when they're, I mean, if they pay them on time, yeah.
It's a moving target.
But if some of them don't get paid on time, then they come in the next month, you know, so. I mean, it's roughly a big, I mean, it's roughly that amount.
Right.
I don't think it's a huge, huge deviation.
But ten, ten, twenty thousand wouldn't be surprising.
Right, okay.
Cause it all depends. So. Um, Capella is, is fine. Yes, it is down some, but we've done some things, monitors and things like that. But there also isn't gonna be a large, um, a lot of dispersments going out going forward, a whole lot, wouldn't think too many more unless we decide to do other things, but, um, you got a whole nother half of taxes, we're at probably end of the year close to nine hundred thousand, I would say at least.
Sure, so I got another question for you. So your numbers that are invested, um, any clarification as what that term means when you say invested?
Those are the ones that are in savings, money that's in the savings accounts at the bank, yep.
And are they?
Rather than the, than the checking.
They're not tied up, is it? Is it accessible money or is it tied up?
No, it's tied up for a certain period of time.
So you, you do some six months, some nine months?
Well, and I ladder it, so every month, two hundred thousand dollars is coming, you're actually available um, for the second payroll.
Yep.
Obviously, we put in, when, it used to be it was more monthly, but with the taxes change, you put in bigger chunks like last month or this, put four hundred thousand dollar deposit, or, you know, I did do one last month because we didn't have enough.
Right.
To do it, have to wait for the taxes to come in and do it. Next month they could probably, depending on what comes in, but may have another four hundred thousand on that, depending. Bottom, but yeah. And currently right now, it was three point four.
I was gonna say if we heard.
Yeah, last, I got a, well, you can see the interest there, Capella, that hundred forty-eight dollars, that's what I got on the two hundred thousand that was invested about eight or nine months ago. The one, the four hundred that I just invested, I will get about four thousand dollars for that same amount of time. So. Have some interest revenue for a change, again. Food service is doing well. Special education is, is fine. So, anybody have any other questions? We did buy some new things out of food service that will be coming out of there, but it still won't be six, seven thousand dollars, or maybe we look at doing a new dishwasher if we have to. Judy did say something, had the repairman here, but he says it still looks good, it's just. They might not be able to get one of the motors, if a motor ever went bad. I have a hard time finding them. He did tell us that, so.
Craig, any other questions or is that it, Craig?
That's it, that's all I have.
Motion for that.
We just need a motion to approve, right?
Yep.
Oh, we don't. It's a review, okay.
Moved by Pearl.
Second.
Seconded by Schoenfelder to approve the financial statement as presented. Any other discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. Post same sign. Motion carried.
All right, well, move to action item B, approve legislative action that works as it needs. The school board will discuss and appoint a school board member to be the legislative liaison for the board.
Mr. Pearl has been acting in that current capacity and does a good job with sending that information out, um, especially when it comes to associate school boards, this obviously, when associate school board wants our help or wants your help from a board member perspective to reach out to your legislators, I, that's kinda how they funnel that information and between John and I, I think we'll get that information out to you, so, um, whatever help that we can provide in that respect is always a good thing, so, I don't know if Mr. Pearl, you're wanna wear that hat anymore, or are you suing somebody else?
Unless somebody else wants to jump in.
Nobody's beating down the door, man.
If you're good to do it, I mean, I, shoot, whatever you wanna do.
Jill, you want that responsibility?
No, thanks, I'm good.
Okay.
John did a great job, or whoever wants to.
Mainly through the legislative session.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
So John, are you keeping it or do you want it now? Or what are we doing?
Uh, no, it's fine.
John, you're gonna keep it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we need a motion to appoint John Pearl as the L A N for A S B S D. So move.
Second.
Moved by Schoenfelder. And seconded by Leish to appoint John Pearl as the L A N for A S B S D. Any other discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carried.
All right, that's the end of the agenda as far as I have, and there's no discussion, so we can adjourn. We want to approve?
Um, before we adjourn, I just wanted to bring up that we did change our, um, election time next year. Um, it's gonna be in April with the city, a joint election rather than doing it in June on our own. Um, just so you guys know, um, ahead of time, that changes all the deadlines and stuff, so in January, by the end of January is when the petitions can be started to be circulated, January twenty-seventh, I think, is the date. Um, and the ones that are up next year are Matt and John.
I wasn't supposed to say that over again.
I just say, Joe, if you're gonna, for a school board, um, election would be in April instead of June, cause that was, that's what we set in the organizational minutes in July last year, so we could hold a joint election if, if there was one um, with the city, so we share election workers, share all that, costs associated rather than having to do it, because it won't be a, uh, like, general election year.
Okay.
It's an off year. Yeah, and the city, we, I talked to the city about it, a lot of schools and cities do it together.
Pretty common practice, quite honestly, so.
But we've never really, never really thought about it until we actually had an election again, and that was my second one ever last year, so. In my timeframe, so.
And you did set that in your reorganization minutes?
Yes, I just was reminding, yeah, just reminding. Um, so when that comes out to January twenty-seventh, rather than February, end of February, I think it's just one month earlier, so.
It wasn't end of March, March was petitions.
Yeah, generally was March.
Yeah.
I gotta do my notices in January.
Just a reminder, yeah, so.
Okay.
Joe, one last thing here, real quick, um, January ninth is your next scheduled board meeting. Um, I, there's a possibility, has anybody got any huge issues with maybe moving that to Tuesday, January tenth? There's no activities on the tenth. And the reason being is that, um, there's a very good possibility, depending on what SDSU does on Saturday, if they win their semifinal game and go into Frisco, Texas. And the reason why I'd be going, I'm not an SDSU grad, I'll make that very clear. Um, although I wish them all luck in the world, my daughter is a member of the SDSU marching band, the Pride. And obviously, if they win, they, I asked her to, is it selective or do they all get to go? She said, we all get to go. So, maybe an opportunity to go to Texas. I'd leave Friday, the sixth, and come back. Be late on the ninth, which is a Monday. The game is actually on a Sunday. So I just wanted to throw that out there, and again, I know there's no activities at, maybe if I'm wrong, on the Tuesday, the tenth.
It looks like wrestling, but I don't know if anybody wrestling affects them, but there is a, it says it on the calendar.
It is wrestling, but it was a way, right?
It is way, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I, it's fine with me, I don't, it doesn't bother me, but.
I'm not saying a hundred percent I'm going either, I just wanted to ask you guys if that was, at least put it on your radar that it's potentially, even if they go, I, we still may not.
I have no issues.
Even we should.
I'm gonna be with it.
I appreciate it if it does, the opportunity comes, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
We can see a push to adjourn?
Yep. Somebody?
Second.
Moved by Schoenfelder and seconded by Turgur to adjourn at seven fifty-one. Any other discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carried.